Welcome to this regular meeting of your city council on Monday seventeen December twenty eighteen. If you have a cellphone, please place it in silent mode or shut it off. Please join me in observing a moment of silence for personal recontemplation, prayer, reflection, or meditation. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Ree, here.
Brown, here.
Waller, here.
Spicer, here.
Williamson, here.
And Mayor Edgerton, here.
First item of business is approval of the agenda for tonight's regular city council meeting. Are there any proposed additions, deletions, or other changes to the agenda as prepared by our city manager and staff? First order of business, therefore not seeing any, is presentations and recognitions. And the first is presentation of a certificate of recognition for Ian Lee Eagle Scout Award.
You have to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so since there's no additions, corrections, is that a motion?
Yeah, somebody will motion a second, that could be a voice call.
We've got a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Still moved.
Second, thank you. It's been moved in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Submit approved. Okay, so first order of business is certificate of recognition for Ian Robert Cameron Lee.
City Valbien Certificate of Recognition Award to Ian Robert Cameron Lee on achieving Eagle Scout Award, which is the highest advancement ranking boy scout. We recognize and applaud your hard work, dedication, and commitment for better citizenship of your troop and your community. Awarded the seventh day of December two thousand and eighteen. I did ask the mayor.
Item B, city auction.
Good evening, city council, Mr. Mayor, citizen, Valbien. My name is Jason Kern, I'm the deputy chief for public safety. And I have been picked to put together a city auction of all our used equipment that we're getting ready to develop and talk about a wellness program that we have. See if this works. Up here, how the city auction works, I believe it was last year or the year before, the city council passed a resolution to where we offer, any city equipment has to go to, for fair market value to city employees first, and then we offer it to the public. And so, these are the things that we have up right now that are going up for auction. And if you guys, if anyone needs copies of this too, feel free to contact myself or Chief Kip. We can get you copies of everything. So the first item is this nineteen, uh, two thousand and six Chevy Silverado. It's, I'll give a little disclaimer, some of our stuff is pretty new stuff. I don't know that the roads aren't the best, so driving around a little bit. The, we tried to get any ADA prices on this to try and get fair market value for some of these items. So, this one's twenty-seven hundred. These are zero-turn mowers, none of them run, they're home of them, so. This is a, you priced in this one around, and pricing a little bit better days. Seventeen hundred for this truck, this is a ninety-five. Twenty-two hundred is rough trade-in. Same with this one, these are all half-con trucks, two-wheel drive. This one is older than.
Old.
God created earth, and then this truck is bad. It, it's seen better days, for sure. So, I put this one at five hundred because I actually couldn't find it on any ADA or online. So, this one's just as bad. This is another zero-turn mower, they're both poor. This is one of our cop cars and, a lot of coffee and donut stains on these things. This one's a two thousand and eight. They both have, we put them at five hundred dollars for the bid, for minimum bid, just because they're, they're pretty rough. This one's got great tires, but, other than that, it's, it's certain. This one is a ditch which that we got from the military. I kinda looked this one up on Machinery Trader online to try and get a fair market value, which is roughly about eight thousand dollars. We were gonna use this for our firearms range, and we use it here and there for certain projects, but other than that, it's got seven hundred and fourteen hours. So it's in really good shape. So let's all for that one, so if anybody has any questions, Chief Kip or myself, give us a call, email us, whatever. We can get a copy of this. It probably opted work with city manager Rufus to see when we're gonna offer it, but it won't be tomorrow, as you know. My next presentation, which is the wellness program.
I'll be very quick to say that, upon coming as a city manager, Deputy Chief Kern had informed me that we had exercise equipment in city hall that was not being utilized, that was donated to the city, and we talked about implementing a wellness program. And so, what I did was ask Deputy Chief Kern to do some additional research and assist me in putting together a wellness program. Um, excuse me, we do plan to reach out to the young lady that operates the Dove downtown Valbien. She does a corporate wellness program, a holistic wellness program as well. And that part will roll out sometime in January, but I just want to commend Chief, Deputy Chief Kern and the chief for their efforts and what they've been doing to assist me in getting this program started.
So, being the model physical fitness. Yeah, so, we get this equipment, I've spoken before about this. We get a lot of things from the military that all of us have already paid for with our federal tax dollars. The military has some outstanding equipment, and they have some junk. So, Chief Kip and I have kinda learned through this last two years of a lot of things that's good and lots of it's bad. So we've gotten really good, getting good stuff. One of the things we just got to help out with our firearm range that we have is we have together a case backhoe that had a hundred and three hours, plus seventy-eight thousand dollars. It's only touched thirteen twice. So we got that for city for sixteen hundred dollars. Can't beat it, so. So this is some of the stuff that we got from the military over the last year that I've gotten. It's all workout equipment that is better than what any of us could buy at the store. It's crazy. These came in on pallets, they're so big. So this is downstairs in the old fire building of city hall over here. So these are some of the treadmills and the bicycle machines that we've got, and they all are in outstanding shape. Some of the electricals, these are pre-weight machines that have never been used. So I got these in Indiana. I was actually down there picking up something else, and the guy, I've been, I've given him three stickers, coloring books, at these bases trying to get me friends, and so they give me a call and say, hey, we've got something really good coming up. I wanna take a look at it. So he said, hey, I've got these workout machines here, they've never been touched. I was like, as soon as they came online, I was waiting, waiting, waiting for Christmas. So, we're trying to get everything up and running. And so, we're thinking the old fire station that we have over here on city hall, and we're going to convert that into a city, or like an employee gym. Because everyone knows healthcare is crazy expensive. So in order to try and reduce the rates and save everybody money, we need to do some things first for our gym. So this is the ceiling, in part of the gym, and some of this has left paint. So, we're gonna have to get some bids and get some, and see what it's gonna cost to fix some of this painted up painting. This is over one of the big windows on the side of city hall here on Cass Street. We're looking at putting a sink back in there, we used to have a sink back in the day, so people can wash their hands. One of the heaters is, the fan motor's seized up on, so we're gonna have to get that replaced. But one of the things, so in researching this for Ms. Rufus and for everybody, is I learned that what this does is I contacted who cross the shield, and they were like, it's static that we're gonna do. Because the goal is to drop our insurance, so it kinda saves on the general fund. They actually will have, who cross the shield will send nurses and people come out and check us all out. Find out that, we'll get rid of all the donuts and everything over on our side of the building. But they'll actually come out and do a physical assessment of all of us, and then they'll also put together a program for us, along with what Ms. Rufus was saying, with the lady from the Dove. And so, they have said that there's no like magical number where our insurance ratio will drop to, but they said over roughly about a year, you'll see it, your rates will start going down because traditionally we'll have less claims. And the less claims, if the less who crosses has to pay out, they give us a little bit of a price break. The one thing I did find, which I did not know, that this is available to all of us right now, is this blue three sixty-five. And what it does is that it gives us deals on, as city employees, through the city's insurance, on eighteen to twenty-five percent off fit bits. Twenty percent off re-bots. Nutriture system, up to forty percent on. Jenny Craig, I just signed up. So I started seeing all this stuff, cookbooks, it was pretty crazy. There's, the list goes on and on of everything that we could have discounted on, and anybody had who crossed. So even vitamins, hotels, resorts, might go away for your, with your family. Travel, dental, vision, hearing products, so on. What we're looking to do is after January first, is get some prices. Initially, Ms. Rufus wanted me to look at just getting some paint and everything. When I got down there and I realized, oh, it's gonna need a little more than paint. So I'm gonna try and get some materials. We also get materials through the state bid price, and so I'm gonna see what we can get through there and try and get some estimates together. One of the things I'll probably have to do is do another presentation, that's Ms. Rufus, right there with disease, doesn't mean. So, but the big thing is we're gonna get with some local businesses, we're with our insurance rep, Mike Timqu, and who cross the shield, and try and, over the next year or so, get our rates to keep going down, which is the overall goal. The biggest thing is it's gonna save taxpayer dollars because less insurance claims, healthier employees, you'll be a little happier. So that's, that's the end aim here, we're trying to do. So, Ms. Rufus wanted me to put this together and show everybody what we're planning on, the things we've been getting from the military, trying better for the city, so. Any questions?
Well, thank you Deputy Chief Kern.
Okay.
That was great. The only comment I'd make is probably stay away from used car sales as a second career.
Oh, yeah, oh, this is a beauty. No, it's not.
Next presentation is the S squared project for sidewalks and street signs, mapping.
Good evening, everybody. I have been talking to Mr. Phillips about doing an assessment of our sidewalks for quite some time, well, since I've been here. And then after talking with former councilperson French and finding out what Emily was doing in Vista, talking again to Kent, and then I got some calls from a few of our residents and thought that this would be a good program that we could put together that would not only just involve our city staff, but also allow the community be engaged in this project. So at this time, I would turn it over to Mr. Phillips and Ms. Emily to talk about the S squared project.
Thanks, Ms. Rufus. Probably won't be as entertaining as the last guy, but I'll, but I'll try, I will try. So basically, what this started out as, is just a sidewalk assessment. We wanted to find out where our sidewalks were, what needed to be done. But as we started looking at it, it became a pretty big monstrous task. And having a few guys at the street department and walking around, it would just take a long time. So councilmember French mentioned that we had a Vista student, that this was right up her alley, and it's exactly what she was here to do. So we've kinda gotten a group together and call it the S squared group because we're going to do an assessment on sidewalks as well as signs. We've had a lot of citizen complaints with signage, street signs, street poles, you name it. It's, it's, all needs to be assessed and taken a look at. So what we've tried to do, and what we're working on doing, is using a combination of Vista students, Valbien College fellows, and community engagement, and trying to get people involved, and doing this by precinct, so that we can get hopefully council members involved in their own precincts as well as the groups to walk around and crowdsource this whole thing. Now that is way beyond my level of, of even understanding at this point, isn't it? Yeah. But Emily has been working with the GIS system here that we have, we have a wonderful system, and she is our expert. So what she has said and what she's planning on doing is creating, and actually what I'd like her to do is just take over from here then. And then I'll just, well, let me, let me just finish up by saying, we're planning to do this on January fifth at one P.M. We'll have a map, we'll have a meeting here at city hall. There'll be a quick training because it really isn't, as you'll find out, all that difficult. And, and then we'll have the map set up and break up in groups and get people out and get this done, hopefully, in that afternoon. So I'll turn it over to Emily to explain how that all works.
Okay, good evening, city council. My name is Emily Smith, and I am the community planning assistant Vista, part of year three of the, of the Build Valbien Vista Initiative, which actually Mr. French is going to speak on in a little bit. And through the SAW grant, which is also on the agenda, the city was able to purchase GIS equipment. GIS is geographic information systems. And it's more than just pretty maps, it actually deals with analysis and storage and maintenance of data. And if you want the ESRI term, which is, ESRI is Environmental Systems Research Institute. People tend to call it ESRI just because it's kind of the top par of the, if you're looking at GIS software, ESRI's a great resource to use, and it's more than just mapping. What we're able to actually do is utilize Survey one-two-three. And Survey one-two-three is part of the ESRI platform. So essentially, Survey one-two-three, you will be able to fill out a survey that has a map point on it. And more, it's more of a report than a survey. It's capable with web browsers and both the Android and the iOS platform. So essentially, what we're going to do is create a form that has criteria, both for sidewalk and for, for street signs. And then we're going to be able to, through the RTS online account. So through the SAW grant, we were able to get a desktop version. So it's the desktop version, which is kind of, just kind of on the computer. And then you've got the RTS online, which is a really great resource because you can integrate it onto many platforms. The city, through the SAW grant, was also able to get a receiver that improves GIS signals. So you're gonna be able to get better GPS signal with it. So through RTS online, we're able to do Survey one-two-three. And this is, even though it sounds super easy, there's a little bit of stuff we gotta do in the background. What you're going to be able to do is actually either use your web browser or your phone, and I'm not sure how far back it goes with compatibility, but it should be, if you've got a smartphone, you should be able to use it. There's an app or a web browser. So depending on how much data you have, or how much you'd like to use, we can do it both ways. It will collect a data point, and then you'll just basically select different questions. We utilize Survey one-two-three because of the multiple choice aspect of it. You're not gonna be typing in a whole lot. If you are, it's going to be an address that's close to the point. Because we're using civilian GPS, we're limited to on the accuracy. That's why we're going to ask that citizens submit a picture with the, with your report. And all it is, you upload a pic, take a picture, upload it, and you're good. There's, you don't even have to leave the app for it. So it's all kind of contained in one thing. And then, I really wished that the internet was working, but it didn't. We'll be able to actually take the information through the RTS online account into a map essentially that will show, as points come in, it will show it on the map. It's updated in real time, so that's kind of a fun thing. And if, as people submit things, if we get repeats, that's perfectly fine because we can filter by location, and then we can kind of, kind of choose what it is and put input and kind of combine the points. So if multiple things come in, we're fine. And through ESRI, we are able to, with Survey one-two-three, not require usernames. So we can have citizens without a username submit this. And yes, it might be a little quality control at times, but it'll actually open it up to a lot of different people, as long as they have the capabilities. And then beyond, if you don't have a smartphone, we here at city hall are more than happy to go out and help you collect this point. Or we can, we can use a web browser and do it too, because there's a selectable map aspect of it. So hopefully, we get a bunch of points, and like Mr. Phillips said, we are going to kind of canvas the city on the fifth of January and making sure we actually cover what needs to be done. And I really wish the internet was working because it's, because of the updating in real time, which is really cool. I think, and actually, before I go, Survey one-two-three, we can integrate it with the collector app, and the city workers can have the same data you're submitting, they can have it on the collector app, which is more oriented towards specific, it's got a little bit more accuracy when it comes to the actual data, when it comes to location. And then we can utilize the city resources in order to get even more precise location. We think that by crowdsourcing this information, we can, we can improve communication through, throughout the city and that we can integrate this and make it an efficient way to collect data. And after this is over, it will require some RTS online credits, but it's affordable, trust me. And we can always pull it down from the cloud. So this isn't something that has to stay up, but it can, depending on how it goes. And I just, I'm looking forward to work with, working with people. And if you want a really long example, I can totally show you, but not now, because we don't have internet.
So basically, we're gonna be able to do this with a smartphone. When you get the app on your phone, you're gonna be able to take a picture, it'll pull down what we're looking for for information. You'll be able to just tap a couple of things, and then in real time, that will come to our GIS system. Yes.
So, so is that, like, what kind of condition the sidewalk is in, or the street?
On the, if we could pull it down right now, you would see that we, Emily has done a great job.
Don't we do explaining?
Well, just, you know, what, a sidewalk scale, so to speak. What, is it missing, is it cracked, is it broken, is, what's, what's, what's what? So that menu will pull down, you'll just click whatever that is, but then you're also, with the phone, gonna be able to take a picture of that. So when we go to the GIS system and this data point comes on the map, we'll be able to downstairs pull that point up and see the picture that someone has taken. So we'll be able to do an assessment from all of the information that's gathered by everybody. We'll be able to do a much better assessment. And then, with all the data points we have, if we have a very big problem area or a condensed, you know, problem area that we wanna attack or get to, we'll see a lot of data points and say, well, maybe we need to spend more time on that. So that, that kinda, I hope explains it. But that's, that's, we're planning on doing that January fifth. Yes.
Councilmember precinct three.
Thank you. So with the, I, I understand what you're saying and taking, so with the street signs, is, are, do we have the ability to do the sidewalks and signs at the same time, or is it two different?
It's two, it's gonna be two different surveys because we want each problem to be kind of highlighted by itself. So we don't want seven different points and seven different things reported. But you're still gonna stay on the app, all you do is you end up submitting it, submitting one survey, and then it'll either direct you back to the, the app to collect more if you've got the app, or otherwise you just follow the link back and you can submit another one. It doesn't take you very long. I got like ten points downtown and it took me maybe an hour.
So if you're standing on a corner and you see that you don't have an ADA compliant corner, you take a picture of that corner and you notice that, and you send that off, and you notice that the street sign's missing. You can also then, at that point, go back to the beginning of the app and input that, and we can get both data points and have that set.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. Will you be on January fifth focusing on a specific area precinct, or will you do the entire city? What I'm trying to get at is when do I need to be here?
January fifth at one o'clock. What we're hoping to see, what would really be beautiful to see, is for to do, for enough people to be here to do the entire city, and then have you as council members in your own precincts working with these people or just supporting these people, that you're out there with them, that wanna be out there and help us do this. Gives you an opportunity to be out there with precinct, with your, the people in your precinct. And it also gives us an opportunity to, like we said, engage Vista students, engage Valbien College fellows, and engage the community, and something that I think will really be beneficial for us in the long run, for sure.
And ideally, we're going to have the survey instrument available to the public after Christmas. So if you were just walking randomly and you see, oh, the sidewalk is crumbling or whatever, you'll be able to kind of report before, just so that we can have more of a broad thing. Because sometimes you're walking around and you don't realize there's a crack here when you're walking, you're kind of booking it to work. So hopefully, after Christmas, the app and everything will be available. We're gonna have links and it will go on the city website, it will go on social media to integrate it.
Right, and we're working on all of that advertising and getting all of that out. And the reason that, I mean, we're, we're working on getting all of that out because there's a lot of work to do, but we also understand that our sidewalks are in poor shape and our signage is in poor shape, and we need to get this stuff fixed. Like I said, you know, having four or five guys at the street department to do all this, it, it would take, it would be an, it, it's a doable task, but a long task. And if we can engage the community, if we can get you guys to help, if we can get everybody around, I think it'd be, it'll be a lot of fun, get some volunteer groups and that kind of thing. The other thing that Emily said is that through this, we can record service hours if you know of people who need service hours for different things like that. So we can assign them a name and make sure that they have a credible source for their, for their service hours.
But the big push is safety. We don't want people, especially youth, running around with cameras. We really want people to stay safe. So use caution when you are collecting the data, and then just kind of have fun with it. But also make sure you're safe and make sure that you're collecting quality points. So you need to kind of stand close to whatever you're, you're reporting on just because we have that accuracy issue kind of with the, using civilian, basically, GPS.
So we'll plot the point, we wanna know where you are. And that's why we said using an address or something like that also in the description, and we'll have all that. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. So I, I heard you mention, I can't remember which one, said something about on the 5th at 1 o'clock, there's a brief training?
Right.
So could you, 'cause I, I'm, I'm going to participate, and, and I'm looking forward to doing this, but I have no clue what I'm doing, so I'm.
Well, I think through the, through the webpages, and through the, through the Public, DPW page, through the Albion Public Safety page, through the city's webpage, there's going to be instruction coming out. What we're planning to do on that short training is to make sure that everybody has the right app. That's basically it. You'll be able to have all of this probably, I'm assuming you'll have all of this before January 5th. You may even be out plotting points, having fun plotting points before we even go on the 5th of January. So it, it should be, it should be fun, and it should engage the community pretty well for us.
Thank you. I have no problem, if somebody needs to contact me to have instructions or help them, I have no problem doing that. There are definitely resources available here, we can walk you through it. It's not, if you can utilize a cellphone, a smartphone especially, you will have no issue at all. If you do, then just let me know, we'll take care of it.
We can teach you that, too. I could even teach you the phone. Okay?
Thank you.
I just wanna commend the staff for taking my vision and idea and kind of just running with it. It, it was great to know that Emily was here, and she had already started a process very similar, knew the app and the process. So just having everyone involved in this is really gonna assist with us, really promoting community engagement and cohesiveness throughout the city. So I'm really thankful that the staff was working really hard to help us promote this project. Thank you.
Okay, next item, item E, the Saw Grant presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Wingard with Ferguson Vanabrink. And I also have Dawn Lund here with me this evening from Utility Financial Solutions. I think most of you remember me from the work that we've been doing for the past three, almost four years now, with the Saw Grant with the community. For those who weren't on council before, Saw Grant was asset management planning for the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer for the city. Number one, I'm really pleased to see that the city is using the GIS for other things besides stormwater and sanitary. Sidewalk is a great application of GIS. Tree data collection and curb lawns, drive approaches, telephone poles, you name it. GIS, the sky's the limit. So I'm really pleased to see you folks are using it, and I wish some more of my community would use it, I think, as you folks are gonna be using it. This evening, we're gonna be talking about sewer rates, and it's really kind of the culmination of all the Saw work that we've done over the past three years. Over those three years, we did condition assessments for, and, and for the, for the rates, we're talking, mostly focusing on sanitary sewer. We did condition assessments on the sanitary sewers, on the pipes, on the structures. We did condition assessments down to wastewater treatment plant. We did asset inventories, collected all this data over the years, analyzed it, assessed the condition of it, and, and gave all that information to Dawn with Utility Financial Solutions. She's taken that information and taken our recommendations for capital improvement plans over the next five years, reviewed your current rates, looked at projects that you'd like to do in the future, and has come up with a recommendation for your rates going forward. So if you folks don't have any other questions for me, I'm gonna turn over to Dawn, and, and let her proceed with her presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here today, I appreciate your time. In your packet, I believe you have the presentation as well as a report that was written. I simply took basically the tables out of the report and put them in a presentation, and that's what I wanna talk about tonight, just to get into a little bit more detail. First, real briefly, I'm Dawn Lund, I'm Vice President of Utility Financial Solutions. Our firm conducts cost-to-service studies, financial projections, and rate designs for utilities across the country, Guam, the Caribbean, and Canada. I'm here tonight to talk about, as Jeff had said, I've taken, taken the capital improvements that were identified in your Saw Grant that needed to be done. I'm putting it in a financial projection. Basically, that data will tell us where you are financially today, and where I would leave to be financially prudent in the long term, where, where you need to move to in order to fund this capital improvement program. There's three key targets I'm gonna talk about tonight. Those three key targets, I'll show you how they work together to develop a plan to, for a long-term financial stability. The three key targets I'm gonna talk about are debt coverage ratio. Debt coverage ratio is simply a measurement of debt affordability. I'm gonna get into that target here in a minute and how it's calculated. But I'm gonna talk about, should you issue any bonds or rural development loans, can you actually afford to do that, and what would you need to do to afford, to be able to do that? The second target I'm gonna talk about is minimum cash balance. I've looked at risk areas specific to the wastewater department for the city of Albion, and I've come up with a minimum cash reserve I would like the utility to hold. The third target that we're gonna talk about is operating income. Operating income simply means I'm taking my revenues, less my expenses, and hopefully, that number is positive. But how positive should that number be? I'll show you how we calculate that. I'm gonna talk about a rate track that we recommend in order to fund the capital improvement, improvement program that you have, that was identified through the Saw Grant. And then we're gonna talk about a recommended rate design. This table, I apologize if it's hard for you to see, it is in your packet, but what this table is basically telling you, there's probably about fifty sheets, Excel spreadsheets behind this table that roll up into this. It's telling you where you are financially today, if we have no rate adjustments. And then in a couple, three, four slides, we're gonna show you where we would recommend for you to move into the future. If you look at the fifth and sixth column, the fifth column is that operating income target I was talking about. Obviously, when we take your revenues and expenses, we hope that number is something positive. How positive should that number be? For the utility to have about a 3% rate of return, I would want that target to be between $200,000 and $300,000 positive. You can see throughout the projection period, are, are, without any rate changes to fund the expenses you have projected for you, and the capital improvement program, that operating income turns to losses throughout the five-year projection. Our cash balance is positive currently, and it turns negative. That's with two rural development loans that are projected. One in 2019 for 8.6 million, and one in 2022 for about 3.3 million. The city does appear to qualify for a rural development loan. The real benefit of that is it's a much lower interest rate at about 2.75%, and you can finance that debt over forty years. So that does help the projects that you have before you become more financially doable. The last column is that debt coverage ratio that I mentioned, which is a measurement of debt affordability. That ratio should be above a 1 at a minimum for rural development, for financial planning. Having a 1 debt coverage ratio simply means you've cash flowed enough from operations in that year to pay your debt payment one time. Notice, I didn't say how much cash do you have on hand to pay your debt payment. It's a measurement of how much cash are you cash flowing in that year to pay your debt payment. Obviously, if you can cash flow enough in that year to pay your debt payment at least once, you can theoretically afford that debt. So in a nutshell, what this table is showing you is that in order to fund the expenses you have projected, and the capital improvement program you have projected, rate increases would be needed to keep the financial targets healthy. So before I move on, I, I wanna ask if you guys have any questions, but I'm gonna get into the three key targets briefly. I know you have a long agenda, I wanna make it brief, but give you enough information that you have good information for decision-making. Do you have any questions on the table, before I move on to the key, three key targets and how they're calculated? Okay. Let's talk about debt coverage ratio real quickly. It's simply, again, measuring how much cash flow you're flowing from operations in that year to pay your debt payment. You can see in 2019, you would cash flow enough to pay your debt payment at least 1.19x. By the end of the five-year period, you're at a .07, which means you would not be meeting your minimum debt coverage ratio requirements without any rate changes. That this table and the next two table that I, tables that I'm showing you are without rate changes. And of course, the slide I'm gonna show you, the fourth slide after that is, is putting a plan together. Any questions on debt coverage ratio? Yes?
I see here that the, we would meet the debt ratio requirement one time in 2019, because we'd be above the 1%.
Correct.
But after that, we would not?
Correct, yep.
And then, so how then does that? So we're, we're, we're looking at a five-years, it's a five-year plan, right?
Correct.
So we, if we meet it once, we're able to continue to, until the end of the process?
Great question. So what's happening right there is that's the first year, if you recall, 2019 was that $8.6 million bond. Theoretically, the principal payment on that doesn't hit till the, the following year. You're only getting half year of interest there, most likely. So that's why you're meeting that target in that year, most likely. After the full payment hits, you would not meet that target. So what that's showing you is that in order to be able to afford that debt, should it be issued, you would need rate increases. That's kind of what I'm building up to, is the key financial targets aren't healthy enough without rate increases to be able to fund the expenses you need to fund and the capital improvement that you should be funding. Good question.
Okay, so, so we're looking at rate increases soon?
Correct. And I'm gonna show you that plan in about four slides. The next target we talked about is minimum cash balances. I look at four risk areas unique to the utility, and I determine what amount of cash at a minimum the utility should hold. That target is between six, about $600,000 and $800,000. You can see throughout the projection period, we're not meeting that by the fifth year. What's helping in the first four years are those two bond issuances, that RD development loan issuances. So theoretically, without those loans, you wouldn't be meeting any of the cash targets in any of the years. With the capital improvement program we have projected, and the expenses that are projected, without rate increases, that's what this table is showing you. Any questions on that minimum cash balance? The third target, before I get into the actual plan, is our operating income target. When we talk about a municipal utility, I'm not, when I say operating income, I'm not talking about a rate of return that a master-owned utilities enjoy. I'm talking about a rate of return that recoups two things. One is interest expense on debt. The other is the inflationary increase on the investment that we have in the system. What do I mean by that? If I have one asset today, and that asset is a million-dollar asset, and it has a 10-year useful life, when I go to replace that asset in 10 years, it's gonna cost me $1,003,000 or something more. So in my example, I'm trying to recoup that $300,000 through my rate of return, so I have the cash available to replace my assets in the future. What I've calculated as a return for the city is right, wastewater department is right around 3%. That's on the lower end of what a typical municipal utility would, would see. We normally see that range from 3% to 7%. And again, it depends on assets you have invested in the system, and the interest expense you have before you. So for you guys, that's a pretty low rate of return, 3%. You're on the lower end of what a typical municipal utility would, would want for a rate of return. You can see that throughout the projection period, we're only meeting that in 2019. Without rate increases, that operating income turns to losses. Do you guys have any questions on that third target? So let's put together a plan. What I do is I look at the three key targets, and I try to produce a plan that moves you in the right direction over the five-year period, that would try to ease in rate adjustments, if you will, or put in a plan to lessen the impact as much as we can on our customers. And you can see that the plan that I've put together is 7.5% over the next five years. You can see that the operating income turns from losses to meeting my target in that fifth year. My cash balance is slightly above my minimum. And, and remember, the minimum cash balance is a minimum. I want you to be something above the minimum. And my debt coverage ratio is almost met at a 125. I'm at a 124 in that fifth period. If you recall, I talked about a 1 means you're cash flowing enough from operations at least one time. For financial planning purposes, prudent financial planning, you would try to meet a 125 debt coverage ratio at a minimum for periods of declining sales due to general economy, weather, whatever it may be. So we wanna target something above that minimum. This rate track eases in the rate adjustments, if you will, while working towards targets. 7.5% can sound scary. Any rate adjustment sounds scary. But the 7.5%, I'm gonna show you the rate design here in a minute, and the impacts to your typical residential customer. A 7.5% rate increase to the average residential customer is about $5.55 per quarter, which is about $1.83 a month. So.
Those numbers are based on this municipality?
Correct, yep. Thank you for that question. Let's get right into the rate design, and I'll kind of show you the numbers here. So what this, what this table shows is I'm simply taking your specific billing statistics, your specific number of customers by meter size, your specific hundred-two-feet build, and I'm designing a rate to produce the 7.5% rate increase. That's called a revenue proof. I'm just ensuring that my rate design is gonna give you the overall revenue target that I'm trying to meet, which is that 7.5% increase. So let's take a 5/8 inch meter, which is what your typical residential customer would have on their home, a 5/8 inch meter. You currently charge $24 per quarter for that meter charge, that customer charge, that month, quarterly customer charge. You charge $2.30 per CCU, per 100 cubic feet, per unit used. I'm recommending that that quarterly $24 charge move to 2820, and that the commodity rate moves from 236 to 245. The typical residential wastewater customer uses about 15 CCUs a month. So if you look at that, the 15 there, that first line in the chart, the typical residential customer currently pays right around $59.40. That would move to about $64.95, or about a $5.55 per-quarter increase, or approximately $1.83 a month. The reason you see different usages along the table is, of course, we've got average usages, which really, the average is right around five to, to six CCUs a month. So 15 to 18 CCUs a quarter. But of course, you have different sizes of homes, different sizes of families in the community that use different levels. So what we look at is we look at the range of a typical 5-inch, inch meter, and design a rate that typically fluctuates within about 2% either way. So if the city council's approving a 7.5% rate increase, I'm trying not to have anybody impacted much more than 9.5% in that typical range, or something much less than 5.5% in that typical range. Everybody isn't gonna get an across-the-board percentage increase, because you've got a fixed component and a variable component, and people use different units. So do you guys have any questions on that rate design?
In the chart, it has 7.5% for 1921. It's not 7.5 each year, it's just one time, 7.5.
It's 7.5% each year. Yep, each year. So the typical rate design, it's gonna progressively get a little bit larger each year, because the cumulative effect of a rate design just does that. But in general, if you wanna break that down, it would be $1.83 per month this year. Then next year, they would probably see an additional about $1.83 to $1.85 cents per month next year, and so forth. So it's a cumulative 7.5%. So it's a cumulative 7.5%.
Right, but it would be 7.5% of what they're currently paying in that year, so it actually would be more than that.
Correct, a little bit more, right. It's a cumulative effect, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, good question. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I wanted to thank Dawn and everybody from police in Vanderbilt for this project. And I've been saying that, you know, four months, for the two months that I've been here, that there were things that we didn't have completed in this project, and this is the completion of what we are needing to do to close out our SAW grant. We have additional training that's going to be coming up within January, upcoming year, early part of the quarter, and utilizing some of the GIS and any of the other programs that we've been able to receive from this project. In addition, I just want to say that they received an award for the project that they did here in Albion. So we want to commend them for their work, and we thank you for coming back out and to complete the rest of this and close out some of this project with us. But also, I want to add that we were also going to be looking at doing the same type of increases in surveys for our water as well. This is mainly just for sewer, this does not include water. So I want to be clear in saying that this is two totally separate issues. So this deals with wastewater and sewer. Unfortunately, we have not addressed this in the past 10-plus years, and it just so happens that I'm here when it got addressed, so...
Lucky you.
Yeah, lucky me, exactly. So just know that a lot of these things were started prior to me coming here, so I'm trying to close out a lot of these projects. But get everyone to know, I understand that rate increases are not something that we want to do, but we have to be able to be in compliance and be able to maintain our assets, actually, complete a capital improvement plan that's going to be beneficial to our city so that all of our infrastructure is working properly for our residents. So I would definitely continue to keep everyone abreast. I'm sure you'll probably see Dawn again within the upcoming months, but I did want to give you an overview of that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. So the city here, Rufus or even Ms. Love, at the end of the five years, the rate would be what it is. So it would be wishful thinking to think that our rates would decrease. It'll never.
Never. It's not going to... Pardon me? Eventually, I believe it will level off, but it would be some time before that, before that happens. It won't be within this first five years. Oh, no, not at all.
Not even here, Stacey?
Just real quick, for the capital improvement program, anytime we do financial planning, the first couple of years, of course, we have a good handle on. Anything after that starts to become gray area. But from what I've projected and what I looked at, you could have more inflationary-type increases after that. One of the questions that I get all the time is when will rate increases stop? And what we have to do is think about when our costs, when do our costs stop increasing or changing? Unfortunately, rate increases in prudent financial planning are a long-term, ongoing issue. The reason most likely you're faced with the increases you are today is had we kept up with those in the past and kept up with our capital improvement in the past, we most likely would be right at that inflationary level. So unfortunately, you're in a period of catch-up, if you will. And once the, you know, infrastructure gets to the point where it can have long-term sustainability, we'll be able to get more inflationary-type increases. But some of the best financially-planned cities have those ongoing rate adjustments. It's an ongoing issue to look at costs and financial planning and infrastructure replacement. So I don't want to stand before you and say, there's a magical number in five years, this is going to end. I would rather, I'm standing before you to say, you know, I want to do what's best for your infrastructure long-term, for your financial planning long-term. And the reality of that is you have a little bit of catch-up to do. But once you do that catch-up period, you can most likely go back down to more inflationary-type increases and keep up with this, and hopefully, you won't have a period of large increases again, if we continue the plan. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So thank you for just being honest and upfront about it, so thanks, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Next item is Vista presentation by Dr. French. Americor Vista.
Thank you, everyone. Andrew French, 702 East Erie Street here in Albion, and the Americor Vista Project Supervisor. I just wanted to give the council and the general public an update on what we've been up to for the second year and about a halfway, a third of the way into year three. So what you see on the screen in front of you is year two's vistas at the time in which former Mayor Brown gave a proclamation appreciating the year-two vistas. On the right is our year-three Vista team. And so I just want to give you an update on what we've been up to to show you the impact that the Build Albion Americor Vista Initiative has had on the city. There we go. So just to give everybody up to speed, bring everybody up to speed, Vista was created the year after the Peace Corps was founded, when politicians in America said, hey, we're spending all this money on international help, and we need help in America. So Americor Vista, Vista stands for Volunteers in Service to America, created in 1965 with the goal of alleviating poverty in America. The first sites that they went to were in the hill country of West Virginia, coal mining hollers, et cetera, and improved water conditions, education, access, and housing. Vistas provide indirect service to local nonprofit agencies. That is, we manage programs, create programs, but it's up to local volunteers to do the actual service component. And so part of our work is to engage in volunteer recruitment. We expand the capacity of organizations that we serve, and a Vista service member serves for a one-year period. They receive a stipend of about $14,000 a year paid for by the federal government. And at the end of their year of service, they get a little more than $5,800 in an education award at the close, which can be used to pay off existing student loan debt or can be used in a bankroll sort of way to help further a Vista member's education. And education is very broadly defined. So it's a lot like a Pell Grant, but better in that I could, if I served as a Vista member, I could go to cosmetology school. I could go to trade school, either union or non-union, and Vista would pay for it, or some portion of it. So I wanted to show you the list of all the things that we did in year two and are working on in year three. In year two, we held a job fair, which you all might remember our Vista member talking about. We had three prep events. We had 101 folks in the community take advantage of that. And then we had one event in which we had 16 or 20 local manufacturers and people with job openings come and interview our community members. We did food fit and fun, or fun fit and food, which was a program for kids at the Food Hub. We had a couple of diabetes cooking classes. We did the Neighborhood Planning Council meetings. We had six of those. We did the farmer's market kickoff. We had a makerhood event where we brought local makers into a meeting after the farmer's market, talk about opportunities for forming a makerhood. We did the movie screening for the resilient communities and a couple of weatherization events. The amazing rake, which you might remember last year, we had to postpone until the spring because we kept getting snow. Again, this year, we had to postpone it until the spring because of rain and inclement weather, so we're on that. Partnering with Homestead Savings, we did a financial empowerment seminar. We did a credit repair series, three of those, to help local residents learn how to help prepare their credit score. We participated and worked in advertising in the cardboard classic sled race, the Albion Glow Parade. We did a winter coat drive with partners, which I'll mention in the next slide, at Harrington Elementary. We helped with Healthy Baby Day and helped expand those opportunities. And we did the weekend food program at Harrington Elementary, and we continue to do that. So some numbers, because the federal government requires us every year to write an annual report, and they're all about the numbers, so here we go. We served eight sub-sites. We managed 38 different events. We recruited 754 volunteers. We managed about 400 of those. The number of service hours reported by the community volunteers in our 38 events and others was 3,416 hours. And if you use Independentssector.org's value of volunteer time, which basically does dollars per hour that a volunteer hour is worth, those 3,400 or so hours means $84,341 of volunteer hours. We have raised, this is an old number, 73,646. I can report to you, as of this date, we've added $19,200 to that total. So we're well on our way to $100,000 in two years of service. And those cash resources come to us in the form of grants and donations. Here is the list of granting agencies, including the local Albion Community Foundation, the Marshall Community Foundation, State Farm, Baratby Community Foundation, Albion Volunteer Service Organization, which was our founding donation for the weekend food program, Oaklawn Hospital, Cronin Foundation, Star Commonwealth, Albion College, the Albion College Student Volunteer Bureau, Albion College Greek Life, Kroger, PS Food Mart, Family Fair, Consumers Energy, the NAACP, Bread of Life Ministries, Walk the Beat, Walmart, and many Albion community members who gave cash resources to the Vista program through our many events. So we thank every single one of those supporters, and we look to continued support in year three. So we also measured in-kind support. So these are organizations that have given of their resources in in-kind. That could be donation of food, of donation of time, a donation of expertise. And so here's the list, and we can read those. We'll read them in reverse order just to keep things interesting. So Rosie's Flavor, you remember Rosie's Flavor? She donated a whole bunch of tamales to our Martin Luther King Junior Day. They went so fast that this year, and I will plug this year's Martin Luther King Junior Dinner, will also be at the Opportunity High School. Doors open at 5:00, dinner at 5:30, and Rosie's doubling her tamale donation. Thank you, Rosie. PS Food Mart, the NAACP, Michigan Works, Marshall Public Schools, Kellogg Community College, Homestead Savings Bank, the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, First United Methodist Church, First Baptist Church, Dickerson Music, Community Action Agency, the City of Albion, the Charitable Union, who worked with us on our coat drive at the school, which was great. Bread of Life Ministries, the Boy Scout Troop 158, Bon Appetit Food Service, Blue Ox Credit Union, Big D Coffee, the American Legion Post 55. Thanks again to all the work that they've done behind the scenes with us. All of the Albion local churches, we send, every event that we had, we sent a letter to every single church using Alfreda Daisart Ray's list of churches in the community. She's a keeper of that list, and we value that list tremendously. We thank all the local churches who then posted those posters in their churches, get the word out either through announcement at their church. So again, thanks so much to the local churches, the local businesses in town who helped again by providing in-kind resources, but also just allow us to post events and things in their places of business. So thanks again to them. The District Library, of course, Albion College, and Ace Investments, who are donating a space for our new robotics program that is being run by our Vista leader. So with that, I want to thank the city council for all their support of the Build Albion Americor Vista Initiative, by your time, your talent, and hopefully, your treasure. We look forward to having all of you. You are personally all invited to our NAACP Martin Luther King Junior event. We've got all kinds of different performers and speeches. Again, we have another essay contest at our Harrington Elementary. Be a little different. The essay contest this year is, what does community mean to you? And how does Martin Luther King Junior Day and his celebration help you create community? So we look forward to having all of you there, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. French. So we have no public hearing scheduled for this evening. So the next we'll move into is the initial public comments portion of tonight's regular council meeting. Persons wishing to make public comments shall direct their comments to the chair. Please confine your comments to the agenda items only and limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Civility and property decorum is required, and the public seated in the gallery are reminded to please observe silence, refrain from applause, outbursts, or other disruptions of the speakers or those here with the meeting. So if there are public comments tonight on this evening's agenda items, please come forward. Appreciate if you state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, mayor, council, community. I am Al Smith, 1209 Adams Street, and I'm a member of the Community Leadership and Engagement Council. Looking forward in tonight's, pardon me, looking forward in tonight's approved agenda to Section 11, Items for Individual Discussion, Item A, Request Approval Resolution Number 201832, To Reaffirm Faith in Albion's Government. First question I have would be, who's being asked to reaffirm what faith and in which part or iteration of Albion's government? Shouldn't the members of the community at large be the ones asked to express faith in our individual council persons and then the council as a whole to represent our best interest? I see no reason for the council to openly express their faith in themselves as that would be expected and a gross waste of time. Second, a great majority of this resolution refers to the duties of the city manager and her competency in performing those duties. Third, delving into this resolution, it is an exact copy, other than some typos, of Resolution 201741, passed by the previous city regime on October 24, 2017. This was at a time when relations between the former mayor, along with members of the council, had become very strained with the then-sitting manager. If memory serves, and I'm sure others may have a different recollection, this was drafted at that time to help smooth relations between the aforementioned parties and along with the growing irate constituency. Please understand, I draw no comparisons whatsoever between present and former members of our city staff. I only wish to point out that the comments made in Resolution 2741 were written for a different city manager who had considerably more time in the seat. It is second, in the second-to-last paragraph of the original document, it says, and I quote, "Whereas the city manager is efficiently and effectively carrying out her duties under the charter and must pursuant to the aforementioned provisions of that charter, be allowed to do so without the mayor or any council members individually attempting to dictate or assume such duties," end quote. I have no doubt, given that the same opportunity our present manager will rise to the task laid out before her, but after only two months into her position, it does her a disservice to copy and paste praise for another on to her. Others and I believe the council must, in good faith to the city and their constituents, strike down this resolution and, at the least, write a new one that properly reflects the time and proper parties concerned.
Mr. Smith, you're out of time.
Thank you, sir. Have a great day.
I'm Susan Connor, 811 East Michigan Avenue, Albion. And I would just like to restate part of what my previous person said, that I was really hoping that this city council would, in fact, change its agenda and remove that item from consideration. And the reason being, of course, that it's a previous resolution that no longer should be considered. It should be rewritten. There are at least eight typos, and you know I go bananas over typos. Sorry, I'm a college professor. I go bananas over typos. They should not be there, and I expect this city council to do better typereading and to think better about what is putting on its agenda. I'm sorry, but this should never have happened this evening. This should be rewritten, reconsidered, and put forward as an appropriate resolution that, in fact, does support a city manager council-type of government. Because we all believe in that, and we have said that in the past. We believe it. So let's put it forward in the right way it should be done. So at this point, this resolution should be voted down, and then a new one should be put forward in the appropriate form. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Connor. Were there any further public comments on the agenda for this evening?
Andrew French, seven oh two East Erie Street, here in Albion. I believe I was the author of the resolution that was drafted in twenty-seventeen. Having read the draft back then and the draft now, I think that with the exception of the final statement, which regards an assessment of our city manager, I just wanted to provide context for that. When this was drafted back in two thousand seventeen, we had just finished a formal evaluation of our city manager. And so we wanted to affirm in a contentious climate the performance of our city manager and wanting the public to understand that we respected the charter and what was intended by the charter to, to what authority that city manager had to manage the city. So I would move that if you choose not to strike this and reconvene a conversation about what that reaffirmation might look like, I would actually prefer that you maintain all of it except that last section that talks about an evaluation of our city manager, because you haven't done one yet, and the city manager has been in office, in position, sorry, for only two months. I have confidence that at six-month period, when her first evaluation will come, there will be a more appropriate time to include that, because I think that the city manager will do a fine job in managing the day-to-day operations of the city with the guidance of this city council and this mayor. So with that said, I leave it to your work to find the best way to move forward on this. But I would move that you can amend this resolution to strike that last part. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. French. Councilor Reed?
Okay. I'd just like to say, we haven't, as far as I know, did the goals and objectives for the city manager have? I know that I missed some days a while back, but each city manager, we've done goals and objectives, things we wanted to see done.
I do believe that that was discussed at a council meeting in November, and there were some set with the intention that after the new council came in, that it would be discussed, and we'll work on that. But if, we'll stick to the public comments now? Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Garrett Brown, ten sixteen South Superior Street. I'm speaking in regards to the vacancy in Precinct One. I know that we have the holidays coming up. I think it should be really great if the council can provide time for people to go through that process. I know that, something hopefully maybe the attorney can clarify later in the meeting. I know there's a period between when that becomes automatically vacant and when it's supposed to be appointed. So I would suggest giving, well, two things. Giving people enough time in the precinct to go through that process, and then also making sure that when, however the council decides to go through the appointment process, whether by application or submissions, that there are background checks done immediately upon expressive, expression of interest from the particular applicants, so they'll know and have that period of time to handle any situation, so you don't continue to have that issue with default to the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Garrett. Mr. Brown. Are there any further public comments on the agenda items tonight? If not, we'll go to the consent calendar. First item is approval of the regular session minutes for December third. Do I have a motion for approval of the three December twenty-eighteen regular meeting minutes? Councilmember Spicer?
Just a clarification, are we, I have on my agenda closed session, is that not?
I believe that's a placeholder.
Just a place, thank you. So moved.
Seconded? Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. The only comment that I had was, which I did provide to the city manager about the way the minutes read for the recreation update, and if you choose to address that, appreciate that.
The question from the mayor was on page sixty-seven of the minutes, under a recreation update. Larry Williams, Recreation Director, the minutes currently read, the increase in the should generate about one hundred and seventy-two thousand. I believe the minutes written may lead to some confusion, as the figure of one hundred and seventy-two thousand is the total revenue amount, of which only thirty-seven thousand is increased recreational revenue in two thousand and nineteen, with the proposed allocations of the thirty-seven thousand increase as follows. Well, the response to his question was, the wording could be changed slightly. I think the intent was to express the fact that there had been a vote approved increasing, improved increasing the millage, or, and with this increase, the recreational department should anticipate approximately one hundred and seventy-two thousand in total millage revenue. Twenty-five thousand for building rental is correct, ten thousand increase in funding for the senior fork center. Actually, there would not be a ten thousand increase to the senior fork center, and I don't believe the minutes state this, but it has been proposed to increase the amount from current, from the current amount of eighty-seven hundred to ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five. And this two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollar increase is only proposed, nothing has been agreed upon yet with the fork center. This would be the council's decision. Then the next question from the mayor was leaving only two thousand remaining for increasing recreational activities. Discussion question posed by council members during the third December two thousand and eighteen meeting were focused to address primarily on what additional recreational program services will be provided, delivered, a result of increased millage revenue. There is only an estimated thirty-seven thousand additional recreational funding. The answer to that is, under this scenario explained above, this would leave just under ten thousand in funds for new recreation programs. Please keep in mind, property tax revenue is not easily estimated with changing taxable values. New properties being added on the road, onto the road, tax captures, tax abadeness offered to businesses, and delinquencies all being unknown when the budget is created. These are only estimates.
Okay, so if I understand that it's roughly just under ten thousand dollars additional funding to the rec department for additional recreation programs and services?
I have a point of order.
What is your point of order?
My point of order, sir, is that this is under the consent calendar. And what we're doing is engaging in a discussion about the meeting minutes, which is fine, but the proper way to do that would have been to remove the regular session minutes from the consent agenda, consent calendar, and made it an item that we're discussing.
Okay, so what my intent was, a correction to the minutes, because I thought it was misleading.
Which, again, is fine, the discussion, it's just, it's, there's a, there's a procedure to do that. And with it being under consent calendar, it should have been brought out. Those meeting minutes should have been brought out and put under items for discussion, and we could have amended those and talked about them, and so I'm just calling the point of order for.
Thank you. But thank you for answering my question. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Okay, Items for Individual Discussion. The first item for individual discussion is Item A, our Request Approval of Resolution twenty-eighteen thirty-two, to reaffirm faith in Albion's government. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that, actually, that we postpone the vote to a later date on this resolution.
Okay, so we just table it then, right?
So postpone it, yes.
Okay. So it's been moved to postpone vote on this resolution to a later date. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded. All, all right. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. So I, I just want to address some things. I don't have a problem postponing this resolution, so we can get a clear understanding moving forward as a whole entire council. As a council member, I do have concerns. Basically, this resolution states what's already in the charter, that we do have manager council form of government, and that we, as a council, have faith in that form of government, was the purpose of the resolution. Not that we have faith in ourselves as individual council members, but that we do, as a council, support our form of government. And I encourage each and every one of us to get familiar with the manager council form of government. Last year, we had Attorney Smith come in here and really lay things out. That meeting was on YouTube. I will find the link and email it out. But I'm just asking, until we do address this resolution at a later date, that we take it upon ourselves to educate ourselves as much as possible as what our form of government is, what that means, what it looks like moving forward. But I have no problem postponing the vote on this particular resolution as written tonight, so.
Are there any other, thank you. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. Why would we want to postpone it when it is what it is, a city manager council type government?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, thank you. So full disclosure, I had a conversation earlier with Councilmember Williamson, and he expressed some concerns that he had received regarding the resolution, which I heard tonight during comments, pretty much coming, coming across as council reaffirming faith within ourselves. Councilmember French brought up a point that Councilmember Williamson and, I'm sorry, former councilmember French brought up a point tonight that Councilmember Williamson and I discussed as far as the wording with the effective and, hold on, I'll get it specifically. The, maybe I won't get it that fast. But there's some wording in the next to the last paragraph, thank you, that talks about the city manager's efficiently carrying out her duties, and there was a concern, because she's only been here two months, that that's not necessarily, maybe that's not enough time to include that wording, because at the time the original resolution was adopted back in twenty seventeen, our CM at that time had had an evaluation. So that was another concern. I, you know, I have no problems making amendments to it, but my reason for bringing it forward honestly still stands. I think we do, as a council, need to really understand our form of government and what that means and what it looks like. But if postponing this will give us a chance to take a step back, educate ourselves, know what we're doing in these seats and what we're supposed to be doing. So when we do present this, we'll be on one page and be able to vote this confidently, vote this, and say, we know what our form of government is, and we have faith in that, and our actions and moving forward will reflect that we do have faith in our manager council form of government.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Councilmember Williamson?
I just want to speak on the fact that this was, I think that what's going on here right now is a really good example of how we can move forward and work together as a council. I think one of the things I do want to stress is the importance of making sure that every time you have a council take its seat as a new council, you do kind of reaffirm your faith in what you're doing, and that you believe in the management of the government. But then the other piece is that there was, as Sonia and I discussed, an issue with a, especially the last paragraph in expressing certain terms like efficient and effective, related to performance appraisals and things like that. And I think that was a really great moment, and we have wording, alternate wording to fix that. And I think that at a later date, possibly in January, after we maybe discuss goals again and come together as a council a little bit more, that this would be a really great kind of ribbon to put on top of that present at the end as we get this council moving forward. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Are there any comments? Councilmember Reed?
Okay, I guess now is my appropriate time to say, I've been here under four of the city managers, and each time we went through and we took a look and we came up with goals and objectives, what we would like to see done, or how we would like to see it done, or whatever, so that the city manager would have some type of direction, she would know what the council expected. And she hasn't been here long enough for that. So that's, that's the reason why I said I think that we should wait and do our goals and objectives for the city manager, as well as probably for the councilman mayor, too.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. So I just want to reiterate that the purpose for this resolution is to really, for council to get on one accord and really thoroughly understand what our charter already lays out as far as the type of government that we have. It, you know, as far as the city manager Rufus's goals and stuff, I understand, I understand that, but the, but the intent behind this resolution is to say, okay, council, we, we know what our roles are. We have faith in the type of government that we have in our charter, and we understand that this is what it looks like, because reading something in black and white and understanding it, but actually being able to implement that and know what it looks like, I think that's something that we really need to work on together. I will include myself in that. But the intention behind this resolution is to say, we have manager council form of government. These are the roles. We know that. We agree with this, and we have faith in this, and moving forward, we're going to act accordingly. So, thank you.
Okay, so I'll have a comment. And there's another council member that wishes to say something? Okay. I applaud what you just said, Councilwoman Brown. I absolute, a thousand percent agree with it, truly do. And I understand the reservations on having language in there that talk, that is an endorsement of somebody's performance when you've been here two months and goals haven't been set, and so I absolutely understand that. And I would say that the term roles being plural, that having a very comprehensive resolution to lay that out would include similar provisions that lay out the role of the mayor and the authorities and the council as a whole, and the relationship of the boards and commissions, et cetera. And I think it will be a wonderful, I mean, a wonderful opportunity for us to work together, all of us to work together and come up with something that we can all live, give and take, and it'll be a very educational learning experience for myself. So I appreciate all the council members' comments. So there is a motion to postpone, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
May I please ask a question? Maybe I'm, I've missed council meetings since I've been here. I don't think I have.
No.
I do recall that there was a meeting where we talked about my goals and objectives, and it was voted on by this council. So if I've missed something in that meeting, someone please clarify for me, because I wrote down what I was informed that my goals and objectives were. So if that's not what they are, someone should tell me different, because I, I receive those already. And so everyone keeps saying I haven't gotten them, but I actually have.
Okay, so what else? I'm glad you didn't let me interrupt you.
I just wanted to be clear. I just wanted to know, did I miss something?
I think part of what was also discussed at that meeting, and I believe it was, was Councilmember French, but there may have been other people that commented, and I think Councilmember Reed did too, that when the new council comes in, which we're now in, that we collectively, as the new council, sit down and go over that and probably provide more specific measure within a short period of, a shorter period of time, because my recollection, those are a little bit more of a longer period of time. It would be a little bit subjective to at the end of six months. So yes, you were, you were giving performance goals, but my understanding, sitting in the gallery listening, was there'd be a further discussion, and I believe that's what Councilmember Reed is saying. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. So I sat in, I was a part of the committee who talked about city manager's contract. And what, what she's stating is correct. We did give her goals. The goals that we've already outlined for her will be evaluated at the end of six months. The goals that we've already outlined for her will be evaluated at the end of six months. We, we as a council have a responsibility to set goals for 2019. But she has the goals already set out for the first six months of her job. And she's two months into that now. And that's a discussion maybe we can have as a future agenda item. But again, the item that we're discussing is this resolution. And I've moved to table it and it's been seconded. But I want us to really understand that this resolution is not about the city manager's goals. This resolution is about us reaffirming our faith in our type of government.
Understand that. Part of the discussion was about not having language in the resolution at this point. So, okay.
Call the question.
I second that.
I'm sorry?
I called the question.
I second that. We need to vote.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Understand. Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded, that we tabled the vote on the resolution. Say again?
I didn't see.
Oh, I'm sorry. I told you.
Did you say postpone, not table? If you table that, untable it.
She can't do that.
Counselmember Brown?
Thank you. So, just for point of order clarification, there's a motion right now to call the question so that we need to vote. It's not up for discussion. We have to vote to call the question. If that passes, then we vote on the original motion, which is to postpone this vote, which is very different from a table. Thank you.
So, those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay. So, that's passed. So, we'll call the question, which means now we will vote on it, correct? Thank you. Counselmember Spicer, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I wanted to, I was just curious if you had a gamble to keep a little control in here.
Yep. Got one right here. Got one right here. Not a problem. Okay. So, I have used the term table and I've heard you use table and postpone. You made the motion, which is it that, so I have a better understanding?
Thank you. It is a motion to postpone to a later date.
All right. So, the motion before that's been moved and seconded is to postpone the Resolution 201832 to reaffirm faith in Albion's government.
So, we're ready for a vote. She just.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, so we will postpone vote on Resolution 20, Resolution 201832 to reaffirm faith in Albion's government. Item B, request approval of Resolution 201833 fiscal year 2019 budget appropriation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. Is there discussion? Okay. Counselmember Williamson?
This would be, I just want to clarify, this is a, and we could ask questions about, if we have any questions, okay, great. So, one of the things I saw in the budget was a 2% increase in wages, a full 2% across the board increase in wages. Is that planned to be given to all city staff? Just wanted to make sure that that's happening for everybody. Thank you.
Okay. I had a couple of questions, one of which was the fee schedule. Okay. And I think, I know you gave me an answer. I just haven't had a chance to look at it. So, I don't want to ask you to reread all the questions and stuff, but just to basically, the 2019 budget proposal includes updated fees. Is that correct?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And the?
The fee schedule, the 2017, the 2018 schedule, the current schedule was given to council at the meeting by City Clerk Domingo, as well as the updated fee schedule was also emailed to everyone as well.
I believe the resolution says it's attached. I couldn't find it. Is that?
It's in the email. Mr. Domingo, it's Clerk Domingo attached it in the email. But if you need me to go and copy it for you.
No, I found out what was provided before, just because of the packet, because part of the official record, we need to attach it in the packet. Is that correct, City Clerk Domingo? If the resolution says the fee schedule is attached, that needs to be included in the packet as an official part of the record? I think the, my recollections, it's approximately a 33% increase on the fees?
I don't know if it's quite that. Some fees were only raised by $10 for fees and Albion hasn't been raised in over 10-plus years in some specific areas. And mainly, just having done it, as I stated in several meetings, is that we have to be able to adequately operate and run the city efficiently and effectively. And as you heard tonight from the individuals that have worked on this sovereign, we have not raised fees in years, not just regular, everyday operational fees. We had not raised sewer fees. We haven't raised water rates. And we cannot continue to run this city this way. And if you look at our numbers over a period of time, we are going to start operating in the red. And I understand the economic status of every individual in this community. And I'm very aware of that. But a $10 change in most fees, our cemetery fees had not been raised. And I just think that sometimes we have to make those hard decisions. So, these are the recommendations for myself and my staff to ensure that we're able to adequately provide the services to the city. Whether or not that's a decision the council wants to make or not, that's totally up to you guys. But you all have our recommendations of what we think is going to be best for this city.
Yeah. I just want to make sure the council, when we vote on this, understands that the fees, maybe a $5 increase in a fee, but when you go from $15 to $20, that's a 33% increase. So, just be aware that the, most of the fees are going up by $5, but most of them are at 15, most of the ones in that fee schedule that I saw. So, that's a 33% increase in the fees. And we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't at least consider that. And that, I agree that a $5 increase is not a gigantic amount.
But I understand it can affect some individuals that possibly are having some financial woes. And I got it. But I think we have to be realistic and know that when we don't raise fees in certain areas in over 10 years, that it starts to affect the city's bottom line and the type of services that we'll be able to provide.
So, I would ask the council members if you need any further information on the fees or anything else, that we need to get more information, or if anyone has reservations with proceeding on voting on the resolution to approve the budget. Counselmember Brown?
Thank you. So, I, we received the fee schedule at our last meeting. I looked over it. I didn't have, I didn't have any issues with the changes that were in that schedule. So, for me personally, I didn't see anything that raised any red flags or I'm pretty, pretty quick to ask questions when I don't understand something. But yeah, I didn't have any reservations about the fee schedule. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Oh, I have one comment. It's not going to be a question. I wanted to thank the city manager and the staff here at City Hall. This is, this is a challenge. Budgeting is a, for anyone who's ever done a budget before, especially a public budget, is a challenging process. It's usually started months and months and months in advance of actually making a presentation. In Albion, it was made all that harder by having a transition to a new city manager, having an election, and then having a new council take its seat, all of in the midst of trying to put together this extremely complicated document for this council and for the city to have a functioning government. So, I wanted to say thank you to all the parties involved for making sure that this could happen as smoothly as possible, although we all know there were bumps in the road. But thank you very much and I appreciate that.
So, if there's no further discussion, it's been moved and seconded to approve the budget resolution, Resolution 201833 fiscal year 2019 budget. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
I'm recommending a voice vote because it is financed.
Roll call?
Roll call vote. I'm sorry. Roll call because it's financed.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Would you please read the?
Counselmember Reed? Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton?
Yes.
So, it's been approved, the 201833 fiscal year 2019 budget appropriation. Next item is request approval of Resolution 201834, which is the fiscal year 2018 budget amendment. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, and because it is a financial issue, would you please call the roll, please?
Counselmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton?
Yes. Resolution 201834, the fiscal year 2018 budget amendment has been approved. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 281535, a resolution to declare precinct one council seat vacant. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
And seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the city attorney to outline that for us, please.
So, as I've indicated in the resolution and as the council is aware, we had one of our council precincts for the most recent November election. An individual that received the most votes in that election, once the city completed its screening process, was found to be in the fall of the city. Under the Michigan Home Rule City Act, as well as our city charter, Section 4.3 Sub A, an individual who's in default to the city is not eligible to hold any city office. The procedure that was followed is outlined in our charter, Section 4.9, Sub A, Sub 6, indicates a city office shall become vacant upon the occurrence of any of the following. And Sub 6 reads, being in default with the city more than 30 days after having received written notice of the default from the city clerk, unless they're challenging the default, basically in court action. The city clerk provided the written notice on November 8th. The 30 days elapsed on December 8th. I verified with city staff that the default has not been cured. As a result of that, the charter declares the seat automatically vacant. However, I think it's probably prudent and a matter of good practice that the council approve a resolution declaring it vacant. Pursuant to Section 4.12 of the charter, Sub Section A, when a vacancy occurs in an elective office in a situation like this, since it doesn't involve a recall, the council is required to fill the vacancy by appointment within 60 days. So, within 60 days of December 8th, the council should appoint someone to the precinct one seat. What I recommend is that the, and what several communities do in the event of a vacancy, is more or less follow the general procedure that you do with appointments to other boards, in that I recommend that you take a window of time, whether it's 21 days or 30 days, whatever, to seek applications from qualified individuals from precinct one. And then at the end of 30 days, you close that window. I mean, what you have is what you have to draw from. And then you, as a council, or at least, excuse me, majority of the current council members, need to determine whether or not one of those individuals can fill that seat. In the event that you cannot come to a consensus, the charter is actually silent on the procedure from that point. So, my legal opinion would be that you would likely have to hold a special election, which I'm sure as the council is aware, and I'm sure the clerk can tell you, is very time-consuming and costly. But that is the procedure and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselmember Brown?
Thank you. So, Attorney Harpness, the 30-day application window that you suggested, just kind of threw out there, does that start from, would that start from tomorrow or December 8th or when?
Well, I think you, as a council, can decide that yourselves. I mean, the dates that the council needs to be cognizant of is, so, day one of the vacancy is December 9th.
Okay.
So, from December 9th, count 60 days out, that's when the seat has to be filled. So, what I'm recommending is that the council, and you can put an arbitrary timeframe on it, whether it's, I just say 21 days or 30 days, just because that's enough time, A, get the word out, you know, have it on the website and get it out in the community. And B, allow time for people to submit applications. And then, once they're submitted, I think you should allow yourself at least one regular meeting, if not two, to review those applications and whether you take the applications and just review them as a council, or whether you conduct brief interviews with the individuals here at council. I mean, really, in terms of how you want to approach it, is completely within your discretion. But I think you should follow that same general procedure that we do with the other boards.
Counselmember Brown?
Thanks. I do have a question as far as, you said the applications. What's the process? Is there a letter of interest? Like, what, how would a person say, I am interested in being considered for the precinct one seat?
My, and I actually asked that myself. And in checking with the clerk, it's my understanding that we have a form. The last vacancy.
So, there's an application that can be obtained from Clerk Domingo and submitted?
I'll put it down.
To the, yeah. I think we would just treat it the same way that the application would be submitted to the clerk. And then, once the deadline passes, we cease taking applications. I think initially, obviously, everyone would need to get streamed through our normal process. And then, the council would then review the applications or if you so decide, interview the applicants and go from there. And I want to say, I think it was Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Decker, who took over Mr. Former Councilman Meade's seat was the last time we did that.
Any other comments?
I have another question.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you. So, Attorney Harpness, the resolution as written doesn't speak to a window that we're going to take applications? Or so, at what point do we?
I think you could decide that tonight. I don't think that's something necessarily you have to put in the resolution. The resolution is just a more formal recognition that the seat is vacant. And that it's vacant and that you're going to start the process. Whatever you want to decide, you know, I think, I think without question, the clerk can put that application and a notice out, almost. Yeah, I mean, but you might want to discuss tonight your cutoff date. And then certainly, you can review them at the next meeting. And maybe you have, maybe at the second meeting in January or the first meeting in February, you conduct your interviews and make a decision.
Okay. Counselmember Spicer?
Thank you. So, Attorney Harpness, do we then approve the resolution first and decide the specifics? Or is it in reverse?
I think as part of the resolution, if you look at the very bottom paragraph, it says that commence procedures to appoint councilperson to the seat. So, as part of your discussion tonight, I think you, of the resolution, I think you can kind of come to a consensus as to how you want to proceed so that the staff has some direction.
Okay. So, my comments would be, as we had Mr. Brown make mention of it, to ensure that we have ample opportunity for the community in precinct one to be aware of it, to consider it, and to submit an application if they're interested and willing to serve on the council. A view that says it's slightly unfortunate A view that says it's, um, slightly unfortunate that the people living in precinct one, uh, went through the election process and, and we're here and, and, so it's not the best, uh, solution to have six people that don't live in precinct six, or I apologize, precinct one, make the decision of who's gonna be their council representative. So, we need to make sure there's plenty of time and opportunity for the residents of precinct one to consider, make an application. Uh, we do need to, to have a discussion and kind of go ahead with how we would go through the selection process. City Attorney Harpness.
I adjusted the math, and, um, the appointment would have to be made by February sixth. You're, so you'll have two regular meetings in January, and, and you'll have one regular meeting in February. So, I guess my thought is you can either, um, maybe you have the cutoff be prior to your second meeting in January. They can engage in discussion on that date, and perhaps either do interviews and/or a decision on the first meeting in February. Otherwise, you're gonna have to have a special meeting in there somewhere.
And I, and I believe the first, correction, the second meeting in January is the seventeenth of January?
The twenty-second?
Twenty, oh, you're right, twenty, twenty, twenty-first?
The twenty-first is, I mean, okay, yeah.
Oh, then it might be the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Tuesday, the twenty-second.
Okay. All right. So, uh, the resolution is to, basically what it does is formally declare that the vacancy exists. Uh, it's up for the council to kind of sort out how we're gonna go ahead. Uh, and I, my belief is we're, we're best served, and the community's best served, if there's ample opportunity from the residents from precinct one, uh, to make that decision. And do you have a rough estimate of what the cost would be if it does go to a special election?
Because you only have to have five clerk, I have probably two to three thousand dollars.
Okay.
How much?
Two to three thousand dollars. Okay. So is there any other discussion on approval of the resolution? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. So, not on approval of the resolution, but just to kind of, um, I, I do agree with you that we need to have ample time to accept, um, applications of interested, um, residents of precinct one. And I know we have a council meeting on January twenty-second. Our first February council meeting is February fourth. And Attorney Harpness has, um, stated that the deadline, the sixty day deadline is February sixth, correct?
Yes.
So I am, um, just throwing it out here to get a consensus from council that we maybe take applications through that last week in January, any day, I don't, doesn't really matter. And, and then we interview and select on February fourth. I don't know how everybody feels about that, or if anybody wants to throw out another suggestion, or, but I think it's important for us tonight to kind of get a consensus of how to, how to proceedable forward this.
I would be amenable to the last week of January as a deadline for people to submit applications. Councilmember Spicer, did you have something?
Uh, the last week of January?
Yes.
Okay, so then that gives us?
One meeting.
One meeting.
One week. Um, okay. I was, I was thinking a thirty day window would be good if we could, um, have applications received by January eighteenth. Um, and then, that way we, we meet on the twenty eighth of January. We could at least have had the application we'd have considered and, and have a discussion during the meeting. Would that, would that work for everyone?
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. So I don't object to that. The only reason I was a little hesitant, um, is because we have holidays coming up.
Right.
And we want people to, you know, have time. I'm also concerned about what I propose, because it's kind of like, we have to make a decision right there in February fourth. So I'm, I'm concerned about that too. I'm open, though, I, I will say that. Go ahead.
We're one big happy family here. City Attorney Harpness.
What I, what I would offer as counsel is, I, you know, I threw out the twenty-one days and thirty days as, because I think it's, it's a, it's a good window of time to A, get the word out, and B, allow people to submit the applications. I will offer, you know, I, I, as the council is aware, I worked on several municipalities. The city, or, excuse me, the township of Meridian did a process to replace, uh, their treasurer, who was elected to the state legislature, and they only did a seven day window. So I mean, I think the window of time that you're, that you're considering, whether it's twenty-one days or thirty days, is a pretty good window as, as it is.
So I personally am not comfortable with keeping it at twenty-one days. I think it needs to be longer, in out of respect for the people that live in precinct one, so. So we've got the, the last week of January, and I think, uh, Councilmember Spicer, your recommendation was the eighteenth?
The eighteenth. And then, and, and then we would, we would receive the, well, actually, I, 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 let me back that up. I would suggest it be the seventeenth, because we could at that time get it with our packet for the meeting on the twenty-second, and we'd have time to review. And then we could come and intelligently discuss at the meeting on the twenty-second, that, of January, would that work?
Um, it probably would work.
Or you need more time, or you think that you need more time?
Now, as long as the, the residents of precinct one have plenty of time to think about it, put forth their application, it would take this, let's say we get four applications, it would take the city staff how long to go through and verify that they're eligible and no issues? Sorry?
Well.
Okay, so a couple of days.
Okay, well, one, one last thing. I think that the residents of precinct one are well aware that they don't have a representative. So I don't think they need a whole lot of time. I'm going to suggest that we make a deadline where the application to be January sixteenth, and then we could get them in a packet by the eighteenth, and we could have a discussion at the council meeting on the twenty-second. That's my recommendation, that's all I'm saying about it.
Okay. So the sixteenth would be a Friday or Saturday?
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay, I'm off of my dates, thank you, thank you.
It's thirty days, right on the nose.
Okay. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. So I don't have any objections to that, I just, or clarification, when we consider, like, what does consider look like on the twenty-second? Are we doing interviews? Are we, how are we going to handle that?
Could we possibly, sorry.
Good. Councilmember Williamson.
Could I, could I propose, uh, that the city manager, um, in conjunction with our, uh, legal counsel, propose at our first meeting in January, a process for how we consider the applications once they're in? And we kind of approve that then, that way we know what we're doing for the last, the last two meetings, the, the last meeting in January and then the first meeting in February, in case we have to do it two for, so.
Onward rate.
All right, and that would provide an opportunity for any council member that wishes to make a recommendation or input, or have questions to get with you. Okay?
Call the questions.
Okay, so can we, what we just decided?
So, you want to state it as a motion? Or, just clarify?
We don't, we don't have to, we don't have to do a motion at all.
Kind of motion, but just.
Okay, so just for clarification purposes, by, uh, the first meeting in January, the city manager and Colin Harpness Law Firm will, uh, present a framework for how we'd like to consider the candidates, um, before, uh, the first meeting in January, and then we'll discuss it and decide at that meeting.
And application?
No, and applications will be due by the sixteenth, um, and that'll be the cutoff date, and that is thirty days on the nose.
Any other opinions, disambles, comments? Okay. So I'm satisfied with that. Okay.
Call was open.
So, that's what the plan is, we'll have, the applications will be open for thirty days. The deadline will be the sixteenth of January. The city clerk will post it in the paper, notice online on the city's website, and at the first meeting, which is the eighth of January. Can't seem to get it right. Uh, you'll have a recommended process for going forward to make a solution. Okay. So now it's been moved and seconded, and if, there's no further discussion on approving the resolution? If the city clerk would please call the roll on this because of the significance of it?
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton.
Yes. So, the resolution has been approved?
May I? After you to?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we are up to item E, request approval for ten thousand dollar grant application for Marshall Community Foundation for the Albion Trail Expansion.
Um, there has been, back at least.
Sure.
There's no one change to the application, um, I may have some questions to, um, Mr. Lully over the weekend, and so I have copied his response to question number eleven. For all of you who don't have it, I will.
If there's no objection from any of the council members, I'd ask Mr. Lully, who's here, to come up and briefly explain. I had asked a question about the portion on the grant for the evaluation of success. Uh, so if none of the council members object, I have Mr. Lully come forward, and if you don't mind, Mr. Lully?
There's no objection, Mayor, point of order, though, we need to have a motion before we discuss this.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the ten thousand, ten thousand dollar grant application for the Marshall?
So moved.
Okay. Now we'll have discussion. Thank you, Mr. Lully.
The city already has the match for this grant, um, but instruction costs for sidewalks have almost doubled in the last couple of years, so this would provide some cushion, save the city ten thousand that you could spend on something else. And, actually, the side, so the sidewalk would be redone along Albion Street all the way out to McCullough Park, so.
Any other comments or discussion by council members? Okay, seeing no, did you have something?
Yes, I did. I'm, I'm, I just need, um, the name of the park repeated, what park was that? The sidewalk would be extended to what part?
McCully, right?
Yeah, the trail, the trail will go as, uh, within the, the proposal to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust on. It would redo the sidewalk, um, along Albion Street from the current, where, uh, Aldi, uh, River Trail crosses Albion Street, uh, Inter Holland Park. The trail would follow sidewalk out of McCullough Park.
Is that, is that the Mallow Park, or?
It would be across the street from now.
That's the Mallow Park, okay, okay, thank you, I just, well done for me, okay, thank you, ma'am.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the ten thousand dollar grant application, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Sorry? That's a good point. We're asking for money. Okay, would you please read the vote?
Councilmember Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Edgerton.
Yes. So it has been passed. Item F is discussion of ordinance twenty nineteen oh one, an ordinance to add chapter thirty-seven, emergency services cost recovery. So is there a discussion by the council?
Your motion?
So moved.
We're not voting on it.
Nevermind, you know, that was reflexive, I'm sorry.
There we go. All right.
All right, just a question.
Did you give us an?
Yeah, but, what is happening is that in typical years, we've had, um, to have to go to several places several times and recover, and fire sometimes never recovers cost, so. I know that there was a question that you asked, Mayor, would be the response to the question, um. It says for fire response, if we average two car fires, two power line calls, and ten assets per year. In two thousand seventeen, we responded to one hundred and twenty-eight fire accidents, but we can't quickly tell you how many of those are a fault of our city residents. The last extrication we did on eleven, ten, eighteen, we had four officers who responded off duty, who would be paid approximately seventy dollars each for a two hour calling. We also had two offices on duty at approximately twenty dollars an hour. We had two fire trucks respond and one police car. This incident would have been three hundred and twenty dollars in manpower hours, plus whatever we feel cost of equipment would be. It, it comes from, we have business that has these fires once every eighteen months, two years plus, and it starts to cause, um, or increase the astronomical cost to the city. I know everybody have heard me say at the several meetings, everybody said that I was telling every department to lower overtime costs. These are the kinds of fees that increase our overtime budget. And so, um, I would rather pay overtime for staff to have the adequate training and not to be in places, because people are failing to, um, properly clean the facilities and ensure that fires are not caused, or take the appropriate steps to attempt to have accidents. And most of the time, they're not, they may be non-residents, so that's.
City Attorney Harpness.
So, just so the council is aware, um, we, we have a, a cost recovery ordinance already in place, uh, for, um, as part of our prosecution of motor vehicle offenses specifically operating while intoxicated. We already recover cost, uh, of prosecution, costs of our law enforcement in doing that. And, so there's a separate statute, um, which is MCL forty-one point eight oh six A, that allows municipalities to adopt, uh, an ordinance, um, for emergency response for police and fire. And so what we've set forth is actually a blend of, uh, an ordinance from two different municipalities. I had to make some changes, because, uh, the municipalities that we, um, drew our ordinance from actually, um, at least based on my research, violated the, um, the envi- uh, the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act. But, what you've got before you is, is a, um, an ordinance that's, that sets up cost recovery for having to do, um, respond to false alarms if it happens more than twice a year. Any, anytime there's a, a public or private utility where the city has to, um, use its services, anytime an individual has to be extricated from a vehicle because it's a rather extravagant emergency response, extinguishing vehicle fires, any kind of emergency response to, um, involving hazardous substances, any emergency response to a fire that could be set with a permit, but for someone who did not pull that permit, um, any purposely, basically any purposely set fire that gets out of control, whether they have a permit or not, any emergency response for any non-resident, meaning any non-taxpayer, uh, emergency response to any fire caused by violation of state, local, or federal law, any emergency response involving fireworks or malicious destruction of property, and any emergency response to a particular location if it happens in excess of three times within a quarter. That last one certainly can be modified, that's just what was, um, set forth in another municipality. And, and, um, the reason that it's on for discussion today, as opposed to having been set up for a first reading is A, to acquaint you with it, but B, given that we're in the last meeting of the year, we couldn't do a twenty eighteen ordinance and then have a second reading in twenty nineteen, so.
Is there any other questions or discussion by council members? Thank you, Attorney. Next item, item G, request approval of consent agreement with shared in township. Is there a motion to approve the consent agreement?
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded, is there discussion? City Attorney Harpness.
All right. So, in a nutshell, what this is, is we have a, a parcel of property in the four twenty-five area that the city inadvertently was not making its required payments to shared in township, um, under that agreement. I had some very productive discussions and negotiations with council for shared in township. They have agreed, um, not to exercise their ability to withdraw the property from the four twenty-five agreement. They have agreed to forego at this time, uh, further legal action, or any. They have agreed to forego at this time, uh, further legal action or any legal action regarding, uh, the deficiency of, uh, in not making payments as long as we promise to make those future payments. Um, the amount, as you can see in the agreement, is thirteen hundred forty-five dollars. So it's not a, a large sum of money, um, but it's something, um, we need to make sure it gets taken care of. Uh, the city has already issued payment. It has not been transmitted to Sheridan Township yet, uh, pending the city's approval tonight. I know that the Sheridan, excuse me, yeah, Sheridan Township Supervisor has reviewed the agreement, and, uh, they are planning on approving it. However, they don't have another regular meeting before the end of the year, so it'll be on their first meeting in January. Um, but that is it in a nutshell.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Attorney Harpness. What happened?
Um, payment wasn't made. I don't know why.
Councilmember Williamson?
Could I ask for how long?
Could I ask for how long?
From twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen, the payment wasn't made.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. That's what my, I was just gonna make sure I was reading this, that it was, it was a five-year lapse in payment. But, um, I'll just say I'm glad we caught it, and I'm glad we're able to, to, uh.
Well, and I don't, and just to be clear, I, I don't believe the property was subject to payment until twenty thirteen. So it's not like, it's my understanding, it's not like it just dropped off the map and we weren't making payments with it for these five years. It, it became subject to payment in twenty thirteen, is my understanding. And so I think that just didn't register, and so the payment wasn't made. And then Sheridan started realizing that they weren't getting payments and.
Brought it to our attention and was resolved in. One thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty cents. Okay. Councilmember Williamson? Okay. Clerk DeMiguel, would you please read the roll?
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Brown? Yes.
Lawler?
Spicer? Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Next item, request approval of bills, and there are five bills. So if I can get a motion, and actually I have a question, uh, before we do that, whether the council would prefer to have five different motions and vote five times, or one motion for all five of the bills, and if there are specific questions, those can be discussed.
I move that we, um, approve all five in one motion. Please.
Okay, is it seconded?
Seconded.
Very well. It's been moved and seconded that we approve all five bills with one motion. Is there any discussion?
I have one discussion item, and it's, I know this is only my second meeting, but I'm hoping that at some point we can have a discussion about the limit to the city manager's ability to pay certain things out of pocket, or out of the city's coffers, um, to raise it so that every meeting, we're not doing like a gas bill, and eating bill, or, or an electric bill or something. I think it would be prudent and best use of everyone's time if we figure out what that threshold should be at some point in the future. So that's what I'm offering.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. And, um, I just want, if, uh, city manager Rufus would, then what you've seen, are these, um, the usual amounts for these bills?
For the most part, to answer that question is yes. I mean, these are streetlights, our fuel bills, and gas bills. Normally, um, we've been trying to, um, stay on top of these bills. So as soon as we've been getting them, we've been trying to process them as quickly as we can. Um, and so that's farther before you today. I just want to make sure I'm following procedure by bringing them to the council.
Thank you.
I, I have one item. Um, not, sorry, I, I kind of saved one, but I actually.
Councilmember Williamson, I recognize you.
There was one in here, and I, I can't recall which one. It, um, had like a thirty day, like we were like thirty days behind on it. Um, I'm wondering, uh, is that because we haven't approved it yet, or was, is there something?
I, I got all of these bills last week, and you got them as soon as I received them.
Okay.
Um, and so when it was brought to my attention that this bill had not been paid, um, I talked to the appropriate staff members, and they got copies of these bills, and they're on the list for, for pay. And, and I just want to clarify one thing while you're saying that. I have instituted what is called a requisition process so that I see all bills before they go out to ensure that these bills aren't being paid over this five thousand dollar threshold, because then I'm liable, then I'm in violation, and I don't want that to happen. Um, and I know that at one of our meetings this week, there was a question as to why their bills are late. And I checked into that. Um, I got bills on a Thursday that were dated November third, and my understanding last Thursday was, what, thirteenth or fourth, I mean?
Thirteen.
The thirteenth of December. So if the bill is dated November third and I get it December thirteenth, it's probably going to be late if you bring it to City Hall on the thirteenth of December. So we want to ask all of our boards of commissioners, if they can turn their bills in timely, and don't assume, I mean, when I get these requisitions, I try to sign them within the first day or so of getting them, so that they get back right away. I just want to make sure that we're just following procedure. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, okay. If you would please call the roll. This is to approve all five bills.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Okay, item, next item is the request to close City Hall on Thursday, December twentieth, and Friday, December twenty-first, from one P M. to five P M.
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Williamson?
I just have one question. Um, so I understand that December twentieth is for the council, uh, not the council, the Christmas party, because this is, yeah. What's Friday for?
Friday, we have, um, two things. One, um, a lot of the staff has, have an excessive amount of time that they have to like, you use it or you lose it. So if they don't use this time by December thirty-first, they're going to lose their time. I have probably two staff members that may be in City Hall after two o'clock on Friday. And so I just thought that it was appropriate to close City Hall and allow them to utilize the time that they have on the books, because this time's going to continue to accumulate, and that was the reason.
My follow-up question is then of the staff that are remaining that aren't taking it as like a PTO or CTO, or if you call it, at the city level, um, are they, are they going to be penalized and paid because of their hourly or because of your.
Oh, no, not at all. No, sir.
Thank you.
And we're closed, City Hall is closed on the twenty-fourth, and the twenty-fifth of December, and the thirty-first, and the first of January. And that's by ordinance that was passed definitely before I got here, but that's been the time.
So my concern would be closing half a day on Thursday, half a day on Friday, all day Monday. Uh, are there services that the, the people need to come to City Hall for? That would be my biggest concern, that with four days in a row, plus the weekend, uh, they're not going to get assessed late fees if they have a bill due or something, are they?
No, not at all. If there's, if there is any problem or anything like that, I would make sure that these things are handled properly. That's, that's, um, part of my job to ensure that these things take place. But, um, from my understanding, uh, Mr. Toppin has already sent out proper notices to everyone. Um, even the staff knows how soon, um, any and all, end of the year, bills need to be into his office, those payments. I mean, those notices have already gone out.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing no further discussion, it's been moved and seconded to approve closure of City Hall on Thursday, December twentieth, and Friday, December twenty-first, from one P M. to five P M. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. That's approved and passed. Okay. Next section, future agenda items.
Ordinance twenty nineteen dash oh one.
Oh, oops.
Oh, that was it.
I'm looking on the data. I overlooked something. No, okay. All right. So let me get to my notes here. Any other future agenda items by council members?
I have one.
Councilmember Williamson?
Markola had to leave. Uh, she left a note that she wanted us to consider at some point a study session for the Attorney Smith video. I don't know, I, full disclosure, I don't know what that is, but I wanted to make sure that her, her request was honored. So I just wanted to make sure that I put that out there that we, uh, maybe need to have a study session pre one of our regular council meetings. Um, I'm not sure how long the Attorney Smith video is, but just a, two, oh, two hours. Okay. We'll maybe redo it a different day. But, but apparently she thought that was important, and I wanted to make sure she heard.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you. I don't want to lost on Councilman Williamson's excellent, um, suggestion that we discuss, um, and consider authorization for increasing the city manager's authorization to approve this. Higher than, is it five thousand dollars?
It's a charter.
Just as, well, just as a point of clarification, it's not the charter, it's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance?
Yes. No, it's, it's an ordinance.
Maybe use this now. We can still discuss it and then determine if that's what the general consensus is.
We discussed it. It's for discussion. Okay.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. I would like for a future agenda item that, um, council training through M M L. If we could discuss that and a date or?
We've already been looking into that, and, you know, we won't be able to get any dates since the beginning of January.
Okay, thank you.
No other comments? We'll move to the public comments section. Okay. Persons addressed to City Council, please address the chair. Uh, limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Uh, sability and decorum, and please no interruptions from the, the gallery in respect to those who are speaking. Blessings. So if you have public comments, please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening, council. My name is Serena Smith, nine oh three Borough. Back again. Um. Tonight, there are again a number of residents who are concerned about Dave's Atchison's alleged recent behavior toward their local residents and our city manager. When we came and spoke out at our last council meeting, not only did we not receive an apology from you, Mayor, but we witnessed the blatant disrespect of our sitting city mayor, manager. The mayor's rude and belittling, belittling behavior toward the manager only confirmed that he appears to have a problem with respecting the boundaries of women. Again, Mr. Mayor, we are asking that you apologize and make clear for our community, our daughters, our granddaughters, the real leaders are respectful and are willing to correct their mistakes, real leaders. Mr. Mayor, be transparent, be ethical, be the bigger man. And I said this last, last meeting. When Mrs. Drake asked that her personal space be respected, the right thing was to do was to move out her face. Mrs. Drake deserves an apology, and the city mayor deserves respect. It's just that simple. The mayor is the representative of our entire community. Once again, I said that. And we expect that your behavior will reflect the values of respect, decency, and self-control. And as mayor, you will have to deal with people who strongly disagree with you. You have to be the bigger man. You can't get in their face or retaliate. You're, you, you represent us. Mr. Mayor, I sincerely ask that you apologize to Mrs. Drake and respect the role that the city manager has in our government. And I really just don't see, like, what's hard about it. It's an apology, a simple apology, and that's all we asking. And I'll be asking that until she gets it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Are there further public comments?
Good evening, board. Um, yes, my name is Mark Anthony Lane. I stay on three oh one West Erie Street, apartment one eighteen. And I'm just calling, I come on a concern of the stoplight is on Superior and Erie, for there's only ten seconds to cross Erie Street. I'm watching semi trucks running, and there's no chance for a pedestrian to get out the way. Everybody knew it's ten seconds, so we just walking in front of cars because the lights stay long so long. You can walk from one side of the street, other light's still red. We can cross that street and people still waiting. So they are running that light. Um, somebody's going to get hurt right there. Subway's right there. Children are jogging, older people with the hover rods. They're not going to be able to make it across that street. And that's, that's my concern for the entire public. And, um, and I have one more issue. Uh, I feel that a path or something could be made for, we have a lot of cars that be parked across the sidewalk all the time. That makes us interruption of older people, the children playing, and then everybody want to complain about scratches on the cars. But kids going to be kids, and you should move out the elders' way anyway. I think you can cut the police staff wages by five dollars and hire a couple of other officers to walk the streets. And, and they can time it, and that'll pay for whatever someone's asking for. Cause, um, it's, it's a lot of hindrance of around our city. There's going to be fights or things, and all that shouldn't occur. And a ticket will pay for something. Uh, that's my concern for our city, our neighborhood, and, um, that's all I have.
Sir, I, I wasn't able to get your last name.
Lane, L A I D.
Thank you. Further public comments tonight? Okay, next item is the city manager's report.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, City Council. Um, my report is in writing, um, before all of you this evening. Um, I'll be very brief and go through it rather quickly, so not to take up the time of the residents on this evening. Um, first, I would like to thank the mayor for inviting me to Rotherly last week. I had a great time. Thank you for inviting me. Um, and I, and I really had a good time. So thank you once again for inviting me to Rotherly Club last week. Um, also, uh, on December fifth, I had a meeting with the County Land Bank to just discuss projects in town. Um, we do understand that we have to work with County Land Bank. They have a lot of property in our town. Um, so we need to find out ways that we can work cohesively together toward development in Albion. Um, there was an E D C meeting last week. Was my first attended E D C meeting as a voting member. Um, during this meeting, board approved a raise for the executive director and discussed the food hub space and utilizing it for holiday baking and cooking needs. I had a meeting with Commissioner Tompkins. I had a meeting with community partners where we discussed, um, development around the entire community. I went to M M L training on December eleventh. Had a meeting with the mayor on December twelfth, along with Councilwoman Lawler and my staff, and Attorney Harpness. Um, we've had two S word meetings. Um, Ms. Emily and Mr. Kent tonight spoke about that and how we're going to work with our community. Um, had a meeting on December thirteenth with Albion Buildings Association. We've had a meeting last week with Citizens to Beautify Albion. Um, I want to publicly say that I didn't know anything about that group until last week, and that the plans and ventures that they've been, um, planning around town, um, they look really amazing. And so I want to commend them of their hard work. Um, there is no formal, um, agreement with the city and the citizens to beautify Albion, and I want to possibly in the future get with Attorney Harpness, so we're aware of the things that they have that we maintain or remove, so that we're aware of what they're doing and be able to give them and commend them for their hard work. Um, Irwin Avenue Project, um, is very detailed in my report. The proposal would do on the twenty-fourth, preliminary plans would do January fifteenth. We've already, um, gone in a contract with. The proposal we do on the twenty-fourth, preliminary plans we could do January fifteenth, we've already, um, gone in a contract with Vitalize LLC. They are gonna be our third-party rent administrators, uh, for this particular project. In this report, you also have light and structure demolition update of properties that will be demolished within two thousand eighteen, this, this month in December, um, by December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, and properties that are on, um, unscheduled to be demolished in January twenty nineteen. There's also a map attached pack, pack of your report that shows you specifically where those properties are. Um, City Hall has new phone installation throughout the city buildings. Um, we are actually up and running through our phone system now, I wanna thank Chief, Chief Kip for his hard work and working with wild to get this done because we were having problems with our phone system when we came in. We had a meeting last week with the, um, subcommittee regarding rental registration, there were no decisions made. That was just information gathered as to ways that we can go about this process and find a way that we will better be able to accommodate the landlords and tenants in our community. And so there has not been a meeting scheduled, but hopefully we can have one scheduled for the late part of January. I hosted a joint board meeting last week of all the boards with, um, plan commission, E D C., D D A., A V A., Housing Commission. We had a representative from Sister Cities and Albion College, um, the mayor, Chief Kip, Ms. Tracy, Ms. Snyder, Ms. Lanue was our rising high fellow. Councilwoman Brown and former Mayor Brown were all in attendance at that meeting. It seemed to be a very good meeting to talk about, um, redevelopment-ready communities and how we move our city of, of becoming a certified redevelopment community and what we need to do and how all of our boards and commissions need to work together and have one cohesive plan or some plans that all mimic one another to ensure that we're not developing in different blocks throughout the city and not focusing on the entire city. Our employee Christmas party is December twentieth and, um, holiday hours, which I stated, um, December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, and also Monday, December thirty-first and Tuesday, January first, two thousand nineteen. Um, I just want to remind everybody, I put out a press release about bridging the gap between community and government, and that first meeting is going to be Wednesday, January sixteenth, and the next meeting is Tuesday, January twenty-ninth. The first meeting is at the Marshall Opportunity High School at two twenty-five East Watson Street, and the second meeting on January twenty-ninth is in the Naomi Lane Room in Albion District Library at five oh one South Superior Street, and both of these meetings are from six to eight, and everybody's welcome to come. That ends my report.
Thank you, and I greatly appreciate the fact that you took the time and trouble to put it in writing, it makes it easier because I take lousy notes and I can't read my handwriting. I really do appreciate it. Mayor and council members' comments, any comments by the council members, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, I just wanted to say, uh, Mr. Lane is right about that light at Superior and Erie Street because I go through there a lot and it changes super fast when you're going, you know, I don't know my directions well. When you're going this way, two and twelve.
You're going east.
When you're going towards subway, that way it changes super fast, so he is one hundred percent correct about that light, I don't know, but...
I just wanted to mention in regards to what you said, on the, on the, um, dice up here there, there's a sign-in sheet for anyone that wants to put their name and their address, their phone, their concerns. Um, it's sitting right there, uh, next to the agenda so that we can remember and keep track of that, so if they do have complaints and comments at every council meeting, that'll be available for them.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to say, when he said it, I was thinking, he, he is absolutely correct.
And I walk my two little dogs across there all the time, I just figure as I was an old guy and I'm slow. And my little pugs have those little legs. Okay, any other comments?
I wanted to, uh, say thank you to my fellow council members. Um, I think this meeting, um, was well-run, uh, there's always room for improvement, but I think it was better than our first meeting out. And I certainly wanna thank, uh, in particular, Councilmember Brown, uh, for a productive meeting, talking about various things that we care about here in the city, um, but also, uh, in making concessions and working together, and I hope that that is a good sign of things to come in the future for this council, so thank you.
I would absolutely echo that. If there's no other comments, uh... Almost done.
Oh.
That's quite alright. All I was gonna say, it is getting late and I appreciate everybody's patience, so is there a moment to adjourn? Second has been moved and seconded.
We gotta call the police.
Yeah, all in favor for adjournment, say aye. Aye.